Could have your attention at 7:30, and if we may proceed, welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for Thursday, March 12th, 2015, and may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Stowe.
Here.
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 Here. Commissioner Bowman is excused for the evening. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we have some presentations, and the first one, I'm going to call on Commissioner Carol Gillespie. And this will be for an Eagle Scout Award.
Eric.
Thank you.
You're on Eric.
Mr. Eric Whacker.
Thank you. This is exciting, Eric. Ward 13 comes up with a lot of Eagle Scouts, and we're real happy about that. Okay, to Eric Whacker, a proud and grateful Abington Township salutes you on attaining the Eagle Scout rank in the Boy Scouts of America. In achieving this honor, you have earned assorted merit badges which attest to your leadership qualities and your contribution to our community. Your chosen project was an important undertaking for Abington Township. The hours you spent coordinating our car wash fundraiser to cover the cost of shipping care packages to our soldiers, which is a great thing to do, overseas to the organization known as For the Troop, and making a donation to the many wounded warriors is a testament to your community spirit. We, the Board of Commissioners, join the family, your friends, community leaders, and fellow members of Troop 48. Good troop. And congratulate you on the milestone. Thank you for the honor you have brought to all of Abington Township. We wish you continued success and further performance in the years to come.
I would like to thank all of you for having me tonight, and it was a lot of work.
Eric, do you have any family members here you want to acknowledge?
This is my mom, we're here.
My brother, and my dad.
Congratulations, we're really proud of you, and I know it's a big effort, and it's a big family effort too, so thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you to the Whacker family.
Oh, I do have one, I just have one more thing.
Okay, I think you're next on the agenda for the Greater Glenside Patriotic Association.
Yes. I didn't know it was on there, I didn't get a chance to look.
Thank you.
Okay, and Miss, Wayne, do you want to come down, or do you just want me to come over there?
Go ahead, fine.
Okay. This is from the Greater Glenside Patriotic Association, the Fourth of July Parade, which we're very proud of, and we know that everybody in the township loves to come to the parade, and we want to thank Abington Township for their support of our 111th, that was last year's parade, on the observance of the 238th birthday of our country. Okay, so I'm going to present this to Wayne Mueker. Oh, yeah.
At this time, we have a different presentation. I'll call on Commissioner Stephen Kalanowski for Lou Seaford, celebrating 50 years of service in the township.
Thank you, Board of Commissioners. Real quick, Lou Seaford back here, you guys want to come on up? Come on up. Whoever wants to come up. I have a really great story. You know, we struggle sometimes making decisions on these, on our board, you know, on zoning, and over 50 years ago, Lou Seaford wanted to open up a restaurant bar, seafood preparation in North Hills, and they come into some heated competition where people didn't want them there, and they've been there over 50 years, and they struggled, and it was approved, and here's Lou, who's 99 now. And Mary, and this is Pat Capery, and Sam, Lou's son, and they've been open for 50 years, it's a family-owned and operated business. They had a little satellite store, I guess in Roseland for a couple of years, and...
1980 to 1995?
1980 to 1995, and now they've moved back to North Hills, and they've taken over where the pharmacy was, and they have a great seafood takeout place there. So if you're ever out in North Hills, and you're Ward 6, and you want to come out to dinner, Lou's Seafood's the place to go, and enjoy a drink, or even a seafood takeout. So, real quick, I'll read you the plaque we're going to give to you tonight. "Abington Township would like to congratulate the Capery family, as they have celebrated 50 years of business in Abington. Established in 1963 by Lou and Mary Capery, Lou's Seafood continues to be the family-owned and operated. Many things have changed over the years, except for their desire to be a part of the North Hills community. We are deeply appreciative for the opportunity to recognize a business in our neighborhood that will continue to hold the highest, the standards of the highest quality for the next 50 years."
Thank you very much. It's nice to be here. It's nice to meet nice people. But a lot of the credit belongs here. While he flies, his buddies play basketball.
Like that, Mary.
Thank you.
And here you go.
I appreciate it, my honor.
Did they bring any crab cakes with them? Because those crab cakes are good. We thank the Lou Seaford family for their attendance this evening. We'll take a brief intermission. If any of the previous recipients want to leave at this time, we'll take a brief intermission, and I'll just digress one moment to... While the family members are leaving the boardroom, I just want to digress to the previous presentation that Commissioner Gillespie gave to the township. I personally want to thank Carol for the work that she and her late husband, Mike, did for Glenside. Carol and Mike go back a long ways, and they've done a lot for the Glenside community, so I personally want to thank you on behalf of the entire Board of Commissioners. Carol, thank you very much. I know Mike is proud of what you've done for him, with him, and since he passed, so thank you again. At this time, I'd like to call on Fire Marshal Clark for the next two presentations.
Mr. President, we can hold off for a minute or so here...
Okay.
So that we can get the firefighters in attendance into the room.
Chief Clark, can you test your microphone?
Testing, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. 5, 4, 3, 2, not working. Listen, Morgan? Listen, Morgan, yeah?
Nathan got it, got it on. Thank you, Nathan.
Good man, Nathan. Oh, this could move up a little bit.
Now I see why you wanted to take a brief intermission, chief. Think we need to put an addition to the building right now.
Group, you folks want to line the other side of the room?
They can, they can go behind here. Fire Marshal, Tom can go behind here.
Okay. You're going to line up behind that commissioner, that's fine too.
What if this exceeds the capacity of the room?
Even got Tom, doesn't it?
He's the fire marshal.
How old are you?
Yep, not as old as me.
Two?
Why not? You don't have a choice.
Mm-hmm. You have no choice.
Jeff, do we have any more out there?
The bad news is, when Mr. Schramm starts his presentation, you guys are going to have to clear the PowerPoint. Mr. President and Commissioners, as you look out into the audience tonight, please keep in mind that the room is filled with a large group of unique Abington Township residents. They're unique because 24/7/365, they're your all-volunteer firefighting force, who place their health, safety, and welfare at risk, welfare at risk, to assist all of our township residents and their property in times of need. During budget deliberations, if it were not for them, you'd be looking for an additional $5 million to cover the cost of a paid fire department. Tonight, the Abington Township Fire Department has two special recognition presentations. First, we will honor the graduates of our Firefighting One program, followed by officially thanking retiring Abington Fire Company Deputy Chief Charles Shipper Jones for his many years of service to the community. I'd like to call on Dave Schramm, Fire Services Administrator, who will introduce each of the Firefighter One graduates, and I ask that Commissioner Schreiber, Director of Public Safety, join Larry Sifkin, Fire Training Coordinator, and Jeff Glenn, Lead Instructor, in presenting each student with a certificate of commendation.
As Ken said, we're here tonight to honor our recent graduates of our Firefighter One program. Firefighter One is the entry-level program for new firefighters. Over 196 hours of documented instruction, 46-plus classes, and today, at the conclusion of the classes and the instruction, the students have to take written tests, pass written tests, and then they also have to demonstrate their practical skills competencies. So it's a rather involved process. It began, in this case, back in September, worked their way through October, November, and ended up in December. There's a couple of the classes that we talked. But I need to also recognize the efforts of Larry Sifkin, our Fire Training Coordinator, who makes the facilities, the equipment, and the logistics possible to run such a massive program. And Jeff Glenn, our Community Service Specialist, who is the Firefighter One Program Coordinator, as well as the Lead Instructor for these classes. Here's a photo of the students in the class, plus all of the support people that are necessary, some of them from our automatic aid companies, to run classes like this. Of course, firefighter safety is our ultimate goal, and it takes a real coordinated effort to make sure that throughout these classes, that there's no injuries. So this is the idea of how many people that it takes to organize such a class. Last December, we had a special recognition for our members and their chiefs at McKinley Fire Station, and in this case, it was another recognition of the tremendous effort that the new firefighters put into this program. All of our training is done at our fire training facility over on Florrie Lane. Through the efforts of Larry, the chiefs, and others, we're constantly upgrading the facility and making sure that the instruction that we provide is exactly what our volunteers need for a community the size of Abington. We're very fortunate, it makes, we make extensive use of our fire training facility, and we appreciate your support on that. In 2014, you know, today we document everything. We had over almost 9,000 hours of fire training spread out among the five companies. This is a significant, again, effort by the volunteers. That's many nights and weekends. And, you know, you hear the story about how people vote with their feet, but these folks aren't getting paid, so these hours are time spent that perhaps they could be doing other things with their families and so forth. This is true dedication. I also wanted to mention that in 2014, the Abington Township Fire Department contributed over 34,000 hours of volunteer community service. Ken talked on, touched on that, and this comes down to the value, the value of the volunteer fire department that you have here in Abington Township. If you do the math, for 34,000 hours, it's outstanding. This, in part, all led to our fire department accreditation. As you know, we're the only volunteer fire department in Pennsylvania, and we believe in the country that's accredited, and to show you how fast time goes, that accreditation was awarded to us one year ago yesterday. Already a year has gone by. So tonight, we appreciate your willingness to, again, recognize the volunteers for their hard work, and it goes beyond hard work, it's the dedication. They do this because they want to do it, and the presentation of commendations for the work that the members put into the Firefighter One program is noted and appreciated. So with that, here they are, and one at a time, we'll ask them to come up, receive their certificate, and I believe Commissioner Schreiber's going to read the first one. We'll take their photo, they'll appear on our Facebook page.
I'm wandering around, looking for you. Thank you very much. So I just want to say, before I read one of these certificates, that, you know, just hearing the presentation, I read about it a little bit before the meeting tonight, the amount of hours, young people, you always think, you know, are just kind of hanging out, not doing much, and then you see the amount of time in the training, going out volunteering to actually work at the fires, or whatever you're called out to, it's just amazing to me, and you should all be very, very proud of yourselves. So all of the certificates say the same thing, so I'm just going to read this once. You are hereby awarded this certificate of commendation to recognize your considerable efforts in completing 196 hours of basic fire training as prescribed by the National Fire Protection Association in support of the mission of the Abington Township Fire Department, to provide excellent fire and rescue services to the community. And the first one goes to James Doherty.
Nick Torga's not with us tonight. Jeff Glenn, as I said, the Coordinator for the Firefighter One program, as well as the Lead Instructor.
I just would like to thank the Commissioners for supporting our programs, our training, grounds that we have, the presented capital expenditures that come up from time to time to support our effort, and I also want to thank the group that you see listed here tonight, and their families, because there's a lot of hours, minimum of 196 hours of time that's spent, and the families, again, they sacrifice time also, and I'd like to thank them also. Also, the chiefs, and as Dave has already said, Larry, assisting with equipment, the chiefs said, "We can't do these outreach programs. These programs are done through Bucks County Community College, public safety training," all right, "the certification, they come down and do the certification. When they're finished, they get an NFPA 1001 certification, Pro Board, which is National Recognized Certification, both in Firefighter One and Hazardous Materials Awareness and Operations." So, it's achieving a lot, and, you know, they start, as Dave said, in September, and it's nonstop until right before Christmas. So it's a, it's a long program, but it takes coordination, and I, just the township as a whole, with the fire department, works so well with the program, that we're able to do this here in Abington, otherwise they would have to either go to Montgomery County or Bucks County to get these certifications. So once again, thank you very much. Peg Jones, where's your husband?
Right here. Oh, there he is.
Very good. I thought you were out in the hallway or something. Shipper and I go back a long way. Commissioners, I'd like to introduce to you, if you don't know him, Deputy Chief Charles Shipper Jones. Shipper, why don't you come down here where the presentations were earlier, and Commissioner Spiegelman, if you want to come down and join Deputy Jones? After serve, after having served with the Lamont Fire Company from 1965 to 1970, Charles H. Shipper Jones and family moved to Abington Township. After completing the move, the first thing Shipper did was to join the Abington Fire Company in November of 1970. In 1974, Shipper was elected to the position of Lieutenant. He held that position until making Captain in 1978. In 1990, he became Assistant Chief, and continued serving until 92, when he took the position of Deputy Chief. In 1993, and served as Abington Fire Company's Deputy Chief until 2014. That adds up to 44 years as a very active member, with 40 of those years serving as a fire officer. Deputy Chief Jones particularly enjoyed teaching fire prevention to the many schoolchildren that yearly visited the fire company. In fact, the fire company estimates that he's instructed at least 20,000 children during his time in office. Deputy Chief Jones was also involved in numerous individual and unit citation commendations over his years of service. Would now ask that Commissioner Spiegelman present Deputy Chief Jones with the commendation.
Thank you so much, Kenny. Deputy Chief, if you could come forward. I just want to say on a personal note, Deputy Chief Jones is a Ward 11 neighbor, and he, when he moved to Ward 11, as, as Fire Marshal Clark said, in 1970, and immediately volunteered, and I'll say that again, volunteered, because everyone you see here is a volunteer, for the Abington Fire Company. 1970, that was the year before I was born. So, I'm going somewhere like this, it's not too embarrassing. So it is no exaggeration to say that the people of our entire township, and especially your Ward 11 neighbors, owe you at very least a lifetime of gratitude for all that you've done, and the inspiration that you've given to all the folks in this room. So with that, I will read your certificate. Certificate of commendation presented to Deputy Chief Charles Shipper Jones, who served from 1970 to 2014. Since 1970, you have served the Abington Fire Company with distinction, commitment, and dedicated service. The Board of Commissioners and the entire township is in grateful appreciation of your years of knowledge, leadership, and guidance. Thank you for all you have selflessly contributed to the safety of your fellow citizens. Congratulations.
And my sons, because all the times we didn't have family stuff because of fires, and to all my friends in the fire department. Mr. President, that concludes the fire department presentations for this evening.
Thank you, Fire Marshal Clark, and we'll take another brief intermission, and again, our thanks to the graduating class, and their families, and also to Charles Shipper Jones and his family. Thank you. Thank you.
Code needs it for something, so I got it.
Nathan, are we okay? All the meeting back to order. At this time, I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the Board of Commissioners meeting that was held on February 12, 2015, and I so move.
Motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Commissioner.
Sorry, Commissioner DePlacido.
One correction to the minutes, I'm sorry, I didn't get it in. Correction to the minutes?
Yes, sir.
In the paragraph where I addressed Commissioner Kalanowski, it says, "We collected a little over 10 units." That should be, we should be, we collected over 100 units.
Yeah. I guess we need to amend. So since it was voted on, amend the motion to make the correction from 10 units to 100 units. Make that amendment motion.
Okay, motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner DePlacido. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Stephen Kalanowski, Assistant Director of the Public Works Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. So we'll start with PW1. This is a motion to approve and enter into contract with N. Abenicio Contractors, Inc., for the 2015 HUD program, East Avenue Tennis Avenue, North Hills Avenue Storm Sewer Projects in the amount of $354,385, subject to HUD's full execution of the authority of the use grant fund HUD Form 7016.15.16, to be funded from HUD, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, PW2. This is a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-016, authorizing the appropriate township officials execute a maintenance and contribution agreement with PENDOT for ornamental street lighting and decorative crosswalks as part of the Noble Bridge Replacement Project, and the reserve $115,000 from fund balance to cover the associated costs, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address for the record, please.
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane, and I would like to get my street paved. We don't have enough money for that. Mr. Goodman got his fancy crosswalks. I would love to have my street paved. Thanks.
Thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, PW3. This is a motion to approve the reallocation of remaining balances of these previously budgeted capital expense items, which have been completed, to fully fund and the replacement of the existing Camel Flush Truck. The existing capital expense items total $9,576.55, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. PW4. This is a motion to accept the lowest responsible bid and enter into contract with the following companies for the purchase of materials as listed on the agenda, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. PW5. Should we give a quick explanation that we will be reading? We'll be reading each motion. We'll second that motion, and we will call on comments and the vote after we do each motion. So PW5, Edge Hill and Tyson Avenue Flood Control Street Reconstruction Project, Resolution Number 15-017, right-of-way agreement. Okay? Motion to approve the Southeast Realty Transfer LLC to perform and require title reports in the amount of $29,860 for the Edge Hill Road Tyson Avenue Flood Control Street Reconstruction Project right-of-way acquisitions, and I so move.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. B. Motion to approve Coil Lynch &amp; Company Prepare the Damage Estimates and Appraisal Reports in the amount of $239,800 for the Edge Hill Tyson Avenue Road Construction Street Reconstruction Project right-of-way acquisition, and I so move.
Second.
The move is seconded.
C. Motion to approve Rudolph Clark LLC to include all of the other remaining services, including the negotiations with property owners and preparation of all settlement package in the amount not to exceed $500,000 for the Edge Hill Road Tyson Avenue Flood Control Street Reconstruction Project right-of-way acquisitions, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
D. Motion to approve Resolution Number 15-017 to add Rudolph Clark LLC for legal rights, Southeast Realty Transfer LLC for title reports, and Coil Lynch &amp; Company for damage estimates and appraisal reports for the service relating to the Edge Hill Road Tyson Avenue Flood Control Street Reconstruction Project reimbursement agreement number 064132-C, Supplement C, for the right-of-way acquisition, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any comments from commissioners? Any from staff?
Actually, can we just get an explanation? I know, I just think it's worthwhile to have an explanation here.
Thank you, good.
Thank you, Mr. President. This may sound, look familiar to the commissioners, as it's identical to the motion we discussed at our previous meeting in February. At that time, we approved all three companies by one motion of the board. PENDOT has gone back to this and advised us they would like separate motions for each of the three firms. So there's basically a housekeeping item, making separate motions, retaining each of these firms individually.
Thank you, Mr. LaFever. Any comments from the public? Name and address, please.
Laura Lehman, Bryant Lane. I have said this before, and I would like to say it again, I do not believe you should approve this in this manner. I believe that there is a severe conflict of interest in this particular case, with Rudolph Clark being the solicitor for the township and also on this project as the contractor. And I believe that some of the information that has been passed earlier on, including even an email and the right to know, there was a request as to whether there was any problem with this needing to be bid, and the answer was no, it doesn't need to be bid, which isn't the answer. The answer is, projects over 25,000 do need to be bid, and maybe there are these exceptions. And I believe the exceptions were stretched beyond what the exceptions were intended to be. And I do not believe that this is in any way on the up and up. Anytime somebody sends an RFP to this township, if they believe that our solicitor is going to get it, look at it first, and then bid against it, I think that's absolutely outrageous. So I do believe that this is wrong. It should not be approved for those reasons and many more. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the motion has already been moved and seconded. I will now call for a vote, and I'll take each motion individually. We'll start with motion A. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Motion B. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. PW5, motion C. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And PW5, D. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. That concludes PW5. Commissioner Kalanowski?
Thank you.
That concludes your agenda. Thank you very much, sir. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Benjamin Sanchez, Director of the Code Enforcement Land Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have CE1 subdivision SD 1501, James Sheridan, 1777 Kimball Avenue. This is a motion to approve the subdivision and land development application of James Sheridan, applicant for the property located at 1777 Kimball Avenue. The applicant seeks approval to subdivide the property into three lots. Lot number one will contain the existing single-family dwelling and consist of 22,640 square feet with frontage on Kimball Avenue. Lots number two and three are proposed for development and are plotted at 7,662 square feet each. Both lots two and three have frontage on Smith Avenue. The properties are zoned in the R4 Residential District in Ward Number Eight of the Township of Abington. The motion is subject to conditions and waivers as listed in the agenda, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'm recused from this vote.
And I'm opposed for reasons that I stated in committee.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Myers. Do we have that on the bucket?
Yes.
Yes, one. Okay. So that's one in opposition. The motion passes. Thank you.
Next, we have CE2, Land Development LD 1502, Molly Court Associates LLC, 720 Rhodes Avenue. This is a motion to approve the subdivision and land development application of Molly Court Associates LLC, applicant and owner of the property located at 720 Rhodes Avenue. The applicant seek approval to demolish the existing structures on the site and subdivide the property into eight lots. A new road is proposed with access to Rhodes Avenue. The eight proposed lots will range in size from 15,098 square feet to 18,292 square feet. The applicant proposes to construct a new single-family dwelling on each of the lots. The properties are zoned within the R2 Residential District in Ward Number Three of the Township of Abington. The motion is subject to conditions and waivers as listed in the agenda, and I so move.
Second.
Is it a second?
Second.
My motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners?
No. Larry wants to say.
Commissioner?
Oh, Larry.
If the commissioners.
Yes, Commissioner DePlacido had a question.
Yeah, just a comment. I just wanted to thank Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Sanchez, township staff, Director Mateo, and Mark Penecal for working together along with the builder and coming up with an amicable solution for the sidewalk issue. Well done.
Thank you. Larry Mateo, please.
Thank you, sir. As you know, the developer sent a letter in this afternoon, and I sent it forwarded to all of you, that they want to put sidewalks on Rhodes Road, Mex- as in Huntington Pike, Old Huntington Pike.
Sue, can you speak into the microphone? I don't.
Am I not speaking? I apologize. There we go.
Thank you.
So they are willing to do that and eliminate the sidewalks in the cul-de-sac area of Molly Court. And I believe all of you received that letter, and it's at his request that we're doing this. So we put it on this afternoon, late today, on the motion, so it's included in the motion today. Also, if I may, Mr. Slusser, the, there's been a question. I met with a neighbor the other day, brought up a question about the Batumis driveway. It's on the sheet 10 of 11 in your packet, in your booklet. That should not be on there. They have no intentions of dumping or storing any of the existing driveway Batumis paving. So that will be changed and removed from the final plan that will be recorded after approval is given. And so we will have to get that, and we'll get the Marley.
Mr. Mateo is stating it correctly. It is a note on the plan, so it's not a waiver request or anything that you need to take a specific vote on. But it is going to be removed from the plan. Mr. Mateo and I have discussed it. After the plans have been submitted for signature and submitted for recording, Mr. Mateo and I will both review it to make sure that that note is off the plan, so it shouldn't be a problem moving forward.
Also, Mr. President, I promised the neighbors that I would, when we get the final plans in, I will have another meeting with the residents to show them what the final plan shows.
Thank you, Mr. Mateo. Can you comment, Mr. Vice President Klein?
I mean, for housekeeping items, should we add a seventh condition to remove that? Or is...
It's not really a condition, because they're not, they weren't requesting a waiver. It was, it's just a note that was placed on the plan. Mr. Mateo, in discussing it with the applicant, is unsure why that note was even placed on the plan, because it was not something they were intending to do all along. So it's one of those things that just as long as the note is removed, and it is confirmed by Mr. Mateo and myself, and the resident who brought it to Mr. Mateo's attention, I think Mr. Mateo has also agreed to make sure that the plans for recording are shown to her, so she knows that it has been removed.
Thank you. Any other comments from commissioners? Mr. Staeff? Commissioner Klein?
So they're putting the sidewalks on Rhodes Avenue. Have the property owners at the corner of Old Huntington and Rhodes, and also the corner of Essex and Rhodes, been contacted?
They've been contacted, and I still have to meet with them.
Okay. And what happens if they don't agree to that?
I think that we're going to talk to them, and I heard that they are in favor, but I want to hear it from them.
Okay, because they're going to take responsibility.
I'm going to have to get something in writing from them.
Right, they're going to take responsibility for these sidewalks now.
That is correct, sir.
And just to point out, Rhodes is obviously a busier street than an eight-house cul-de-sac is going to be. So I, frankly, I live on a cul-de-sac without sidewalks, and it's only the people on the streets, so it's very safe. Rhodes, by doing this, they're going over adjacent property owners in the right-of-way through adjacent property owners to connect to the neighborhood. So it's actually a very positive thing and that, you know, Mr. Mateo and everybody else could work through, where you're connecting this new eight-house subdivision to the surrounding neighborhoods through walkable sidewalks. So I think it was a good resolution, and I think the developer, you know, for doing this, it was a good compromise, so just make that point.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Jones?
I want to piggyback on that. The connection also will enable this community to go not only to the rest of the neighborhood, but you can also now walk to places like Alworthor Park. And one of the things that's been worked on is the walkability of the township and connecting various neighborhoods and various areas to other sites, locations, and attractions in the community. So this is potentially a win-win situation for everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. I just wanted to echo Commissioner DePlacido's comments. I want to thank Commissioner Jones for an outstanding job, also Commissioner Sanchez, and viewing the Code Enforcement Land Development meeting. Commissioner Markman lent his expertise in with some valuable comments. And last but not least, Mr. Mateo, I understand you spent a couple hours with one concerned resident that was here at Code Enforcement, so we all want to thank you for your time.
Good time.
so we all want to thank you for your time and effort in that capacity. Are there any comments from residents? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And last, we have CE3 zoning code amendment, temporary sales ordinance number 2093. This is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2093, an amendment to the township zoning code, Article 8, supplemental district regulations, Section 801.N, display and storage of goods. And I so move.
Second?
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Schreiber?
I have a question. Do we need a date on that? That's my question.
Oh, yeah.
It'll be for the May agenda of the Board of Commissioners?
Does that need to be officially amended?
It can't be any earlier than the May agenda because it has to be the planning commission. So if we wanted to list a date, the advertisement would say the date that it's going to be considered. I don't know if the motion needs to.
Larry, you say May 12?
May 12, is it it?
May 12?
And do we need to amend this?
So is she making amendment to...
Let's try May, let's try May 14 would be the next one.
Okay, or the May board. So I'd like to make, I'll make an amendment to the motion to add the date, May 14th, at the next, at the board meeting in May, which is on the date of May 14th, 2015, for the public hearing to actually occur. And I so move.
Second? Okay, the motion has been amended and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Commissioner Klein?
So this is going to go in the zoning code?
Yes.
So if we make any changes during the public hearing in May, it would have to get re-advertised?
If the changes are substantial, then it would need to be re-advertized.
Okay.
Minor, minor amendments would not require re-advertising. Substantial amendments would require re-advertising.
I said, I think I said this in the last time we had this up. I think 1,000 feet is a, is a long distance to be in the code. So I would have that concern. I'll bring it up in the public hearing, but, you know, if it's going to be something that anybody else has any issues with, make a change now, or we'll deal with it in the board meeting.
Often, the, the purpose of having to re-advertise is that if substantial amendments are made, those individuals who may have an interest in the ordinance need to know that the ordinance is changing so substantially that maybe some who didn't have an interest would. Normally, when you're dealing with distances, it isn't necessarily considered a substantial amendment. But considering this will greatly impact the rights of certain people, if we're going to stay at 1,000, we, and that's what we're going to vote on, on in May, I think we would be fine. If we're going to drop or raise one way or the other in May, it probably would require re-advertising. So at the risk of lengthening the discussion tonight, if 1,000 feet isn't what the board is comfortable with, it's probably a discussion that should occur this evening, so the ordinance is amended before it's advertised.
Stephen, what are you recommending?
I'd have to look at others, but I haven't seen in restrictive ordinances that have specific distances. I haven't seen a distance of 1,000 feet. I think that's a, an odd number. I think it's a high number that I've seen in other restrictive ordinances where things are further apart. I know throughout the zoning ordinance we've used, or the draft zoning ordinance, we've used numbers closer to 500 feet in our, in our drafting of when we talk about things that should be further apart, like bars and taverns and certain districts. So my experience has been that 1,000 feet is a, is a, is a large number for something like this.
Any other comments? Commissioner Hecker?
I was just curious about how we arrived at the 90-day effective period, the limitation on two permits, and the 1,000 feet. Were we researching comparable ordinances in other municipalities?
And I have the bad microphone this evening. We were, we did look at similar ordinances, not necessarily with regards to this particular product.
Okay.
But we were looking at some similar ordinances from other municipalities. Frankly, this is not, this type of ordinance is not one that we were able to find in other municipalities, but we did look at some other things that were comparable, and these were sort of the time periods and the, the distances that we were seeing. There was some input or some discussion with staff and others to arrive upon these numbers.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schreiber?
I'm not sure what 1,000 feet looks like. So, I mean, but what is that, like, from where to where? I, I see the picture.
What we did is, the, the square in the middle is the township building, and you'll see Old Jerk Road, Horace Avenue, and Sesquahana Road. From the edge of their property, you'll see that the 1,000 feet up and down Horace Avenue, and of course, Old Jerk Road. It'll go to Weechy Lane, 1,000 feet from the township building. That's two streets back. That's in Ward 11, Gentlemen's Ward. And Huntington Road, which is right here by our field, Huntington Field, that would be 1,000 feet from the, from the township building. So I, we just did it from the township building. I couldn't pick everybody, but this will show you a distance, what 1,000 feet would look like.
Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Myers?
I'm happy to see how far 1,000 feet is, and I'm quite sure that those businesses in Abington Township who pay taxes all year long and have to support their business through non-holidays will think that 1,000 feet is not far enough.
Any other comments from commissioners? Based on what you said, Counselor, we would have to, if we're going to make or consider a change, we have to do that now?
I would think that with respect to the 1,000 feet, and in light of, I think, what Commissioner Myers has just said, that if the board doesn't want it to be 1,000 feet, it's probably a change that should be made now, as opposed to our meeting on May 14th. Because I believe the argument could be made by someone that if we drop this, someone who may have a store within 750 feet, who does not feel the need to come out to the meeting in, in May, because it says 1,000, if we drop it down to 500, and now they're no longer covered, they may have a legitimate argument that had they known it was going to be 500, they would have, they would have come out and, and opposed it and voiced their opinions. So that's why I think if the board isn't comfortable with 1,000 feet, or wants it higher or lower, it's probably, again, a discussion that should be had now. So what we're advertising is what the board is comfortable with, bearing in mind, on May 14th, you, you can do what you, what the majority of you want to do.
So can I just ask a question?
Commissioner Schreiber?
So are you saying that if we dropped it to 500, that at the hearing, we could up it again, if we, or no?
Well, I'm going to advise you to pick a number that you're comfortable with now and stick with that number. If, because I think, I think you're running into the problem that this is a very specific ordinance, addressing in many ways, very specific businesses, and very specific, for the lack of a better word, pop-up businesses. And I think those people who would have an interest should know what you were planning on, on passing in advance. So just, it's my opinion. I don't know if I could point to anything that says you have to do that with distances when you're passing ordinances. I just think it may be, it may be advisable.
Commissioner Spiegel? And then Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Solicitor Clark, forgiving the, the nitpicky nature of this question, is there a percentage in the, in the, in the, this number of feet, in, in area of wiggle room, that would or wouldn't trigger the threshold of, okay, that's a substantive change, you have to re-advertise?
And, no, because the re-advertising requirements of when substantial changes are made is that any individual who would have an interest in the potential ordinance has to have proper notice. The issue is really going to be, there's not so much a litmus test of 5%, 10%, 20%. It's more as to whether or not, and I don't know if this occurs in, in the township, but more as to whether or not certain people are covered by the 1,000 feet, might not be covered by the 750, certainly wouldn't be covered by the 500. They would not have ample notice. Now, I think, from this issue being around for the past year or so, I think those who have an interest in it are going to be here on the 14th, no matter if we say 1,000 or whatever. But just in an abundance of caution, I think if, if the board isn't comfortable with 1,000 feet, it might be a decision they want to make now.
Okay, Commissioner Zepone?
I kind of agree with the 1,000 feet, and going back to what Commissioner Myers says. Those businesses have been in this township for years and pay their taxes all year long. These pop-up tents that go up, I have one in Arslay, because it's, they're hideous-looking. Okay, so 1,000, 2,000 feet. It's only fair to the taxpayers, these businesses that are here all year long. Okay, so that's my feelings on it.
Okay, Commissioner Gillespie?
I, I feel the same way, truly, because they do just pop up, and these other folks are paying their taxes. I think it's really important in 1,000, and I agree with you, Commissioner Zepone, it could be 2,000 feet, as far as I'm concerned, but 1,000 will have to do, I guess.
Commissioner Klein?
Yeah, I, I got a question, just, do the people that get temporary sales, do they actually pay taxes? Are they somehow incorporated into the business privilege tax system?
They are responsible for paying business privilege tax.
So they're paying taxes also?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, I mean...
Actually, it's marketeal tax, I'm sorry.
What's that?
Marketeal tax.
Marketeal tax. Thank you.
Commissioner Zepone?
Just to touch on that a minute, okay? They're paying taxes. All their transactions are cash deal. They can tell the tax office they made 100 bucks. I mean, come on, it's all cash.
I understand that. I'm just making sure that, I mean, the township has a mechanism for which they have to report their income and have to pay taxes. So I can't speak to whether they actually pay them or not. I just want to make sure it's clear that the township just doesn't let them go through, the intention of the township is not to let them go through free without paying taxes. They're responsible for paying taxes, just like everybody else.
That mechanism is zero.
Is the point that I'm making.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
I got, I could, yeah.
Commissioner Kalanowski?
I'm, I know Edie's here, and I'm sure she'll get up and speak about this. But with the Roslyn Fire Company, they're not that distance, and they do sell in the ordinance, I mean, they, they sell Christmas trees.
They're a nonprofit organization.
So that wouldn't affect that?
You're, they're exempt.
Okay.
And, right, what, unless the business that they're within, and it doesn't apply, they're exempt for other reasons, but Christmas trees probably aren't something that are sold at a, at a brick-and-mortar florist, for instance.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
Did you have one?
At this time, before we vote, I'd like to take any comments from residents. Yes, I see Ms. Edith Schmidt signed up. Name and address, please?
Edith Schmidt, Elite Florals, 1160 Bradfield Road. And you're absolutely correct. Roslyn Fire Company, clear and free and clear. Any fire company, nonprofit, we don't have any problem with that. However, I had at the last meeting provided you with some specs from the brick-and-mortar florist, two of which 1,000 feet is a joke. 1,000 feet is visible from my door to where the first stand normally is on the holidays. I do appreciate the fact that you've been working on this. However, do you realize by pushing this off until May 14th, you are now hitting two more main holidays for us? Okay? Easter is around the corner, as is Mother's Day. You have postponed this till after Mother's Day. We have already put our literature out for our advertising. This is, again, if you do not have a copy of this, I'll be happy to supply it again. These were requests from the brick-and-mortar florist at your last meeting, that I gave copies enough for every commissioner, as well as the rest of the staff here, asking why we do not have the rights, as these pop-up stands do. We spend thousands and thousands of dollars on advertisement, and they pop up, and they steal the revenue. Now, I understand that you're saying they're going to pay taxes. Your commissioners here have just informed you, these are all sales, cash sales. You don't have any way of tracking them, absolutely none, unless you implement some kind of four-square something or other, and make them do all credit card sales, which you will not do. I understand that. I also understand that this is a big problem for you to handle in this township. However, the biggest problem you have right now is you have brick-and-mortar florists who are watching and waiting to see whether their commissioners cared enough about them who chose to be in this township. I chose Roslyn. I chose Abington to open up my business for a reason. Okay? I've lived here for 30-plus years. I wanted to make sure that my business was solid in Abington. Right now, I don't feel like Abington has my back, and mine to do the other florists. That's why this literally states Penny's Flowers. I'm just a spokesperson, okay? I am the spearhead of this right now. Penny's Flowers, Rick Penny Packer, the Krems, who reside in Abington but have a business in Woolley Grove, the beautiful little flower shop across the street in Bloom. Do you know that even Prodigy Junction, as a brick-and-mortar, have gotten on board with this? We pay our taxes to you. There's no way you're going to be able to collect taxes. The interesting thing, if I do remember correctly, I do remember something about, and I could be wrong on this, you can check on this, that they did get permits to have these stands, but did not pay for those permits. That was an eye-opener for me, okay? Because I know as a businessperson, I couldn't just open up and not have a permit from the township or a license. Okay? We did ask for specific things on here, and 1,000 feet is a joke. It's a total joke. All right? We had asked for that mile for a reason, and there was a big reason for it, because we are tired of our hard-earned money going elsewhere. And this township should be concerned about that as well, because the taxes that you are losing could be put into our beautiful fire company that we just graduated people from, or could go into our landscapes, or other projects. This is sad, that we are allowing these people to come in, or person, and just do this. They walk in, they walk out. It's got to be figured out. And 1,000 feet is not acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from residents? Okay, hearing, okay, Commissioner Schreiber?
Because I know Edie just mentioned 1,000 feet. Would you, Mr. Mateo, would you have an idea of where 1,000 feet is in Roslyn? You know, from like, where Edie's, yeah, do you have an idea? Do you know that, Edie?
Approximately from my door to the beginning of the cemetery. I can measure tomorrow.
Now, Counselor, correct me if I'm wrong. We have a motion here, but would this be considered a recommendation that Vice President Klein may be an amendment to the motion?
Well, I haven't made an amendment.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. My apologies. Commissioner Gillespie?
I just have a question. Do we have to, thank you, do we have to have pop-up businesses in the township? People just popping up their little tent? Just a question?
And the short answer is yes. They are, they are legal, as long as they comply with what they need to do about getting permits and, and other things. They are legal.
Okay, so if no one is going to amend the motion, then if I'm not mistaken, Counselor, if we vote on the motion as it stands now, that would be for the 1,000 feet distance?
That is correct. It is the motion as presented.
Okay, if there are no questions or changes or amendments to the motion, all those in favor of the motion, as listed on the agenda, it has been moved and seconded.
Yes, it has.
Okay. All, all those, I'm sorry.
Again, I just want to make this clear. This is going to be to accept 1,000 feet.
Correct.
All right, so, you know, there's no discussion about a mile, two, three, 4,000 feet. So this motion is for the 1,000 feet.
Right. If I'm not mistaken, there was no, there was no amendment to that motion. Right. So it's 1,000.
Well, I'd like to make an amendment, okay, to the motion, if it's not too late, okay?
I'm voting it.
We exceed this to 5,000 feet.
Is anybody going to second it?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Farron. So we have to vote then?
It is a, there is a motion now made by Commissioner Zepone, seconded by Commissioner Farron, to amend the ordinance to, for 5,000 feet. So there should be a vote now on whether or not to accept the amendment of 5,000 feet. If that motion fails, then you go back to the original motion, which was made... the original motion, which was made and seconded.
Commissioner Klein, I'm sorry.
That's right. Thank you, President Luger. I have one question for the solicitor. It's always been my understanding that there are certain numbers that are not favorable, or not looked upon favorably in court cases within distant restrictions in zoning, and 5,000 feet seems to be, in my experience, in my understanding, an excessive amount.
Without commenting on whether or not 5,000 feet is excessive or not, it is, anytime you are placing this kind of restriction in an ordinance, you always run the risk of having, if it gets challenged, you always run the risk of having a judge saying, we would have to say what our basis is, what the legitimate interest of the municipality is in using that distance, and we would probably be called upon to back that up with some data. It's always difficult when you're dealing with a distance, because you know with a judge who would be ruling on this, they can, in their own mind, they may say it's too small, it's too far, it's too much. So, it's always difficult with distances. But I don't, there's no way for me to say just automatically that 5,000 is bad, 4,000 is good, 6,000 is good.
Well, the issue is, if you did a grid, and you took 5,000 feet from every business that sold flowers, the question is, is there any place that would in fact be acceptable for a pop, and if in fact there wasn't any spot in the township that was acceptable for a pop-up business, it would be overly restrictive, I would assume.
And a few years ago, in one of our municipalities, in Bucks County, we passed an ordinance that had a restriction on where certain people who had been convicted of certain sex offenses could reside, and when it was challenged, the map showed that there was absolutely nowhere in the township that anywhere anyone could live, because we eliminated schools and bowling alleys and parks and things along those lines. So, while our case was never challenged, because it was thrown out some other time, yeah, if you say 5,000 feet, and then you begin to draw the map, it might be a basis to challenge it, but then again, maybe 1,000 or 2,000, so it's difficult to say.
President Luger.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, sir. Would it, would it be possible, and this is for our solicitor, to specifically for these biz, these pop-up businesses, specifically identify certain areas of the township where they would be able to operate and have those as a zone that was open for those businesses, and anywhere outside of those zones would be restricted for said businesses?
And Commissioner Jones, this is why it is difficult to do that, because you are not necessarily regulating the pop-up florist. Because if I own the gas station somewhere within the township, and I'm zoned commercial, and if in the commercial district, I'm allowed to sell certain items, that's the property where this is actually taking place. So, they're actually the one who is permitting this on their property. These pop-up businesses don't just happen on vacant pieces of ground, by and large, they tend to go into gas stations and other businesses like that. So, the only way you would be able to do it would be to put in a certain restriction on all of your commercial businesses, and that would be incredibly difficult. Because what you would run into then is anything that flows with that business would begin to, you'd begin to start restricting it, and it would become incredibly cumbersome.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Schreiber.
Just following up on that, so if a gas station right now has a pop-up that they, can they, could they come back and say, now we're restricting their income, the gas station? Because they usually get some of the proceeds from this pop-up?
They might. They, and they, that's why, again, we're not going after the, changing anything to do with the commercial businesses. We're talking about permits for these sort of pop-ups, which is not your normal, your normal business, but that also could be a potential pitfall of this ordinance, or a potential challenge to this ordinance, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. We're, we're using flowers just as an example. This is not exclusive to flowers, and we could have a food truck in front of a restaurant. And some years ago, I know Mr. Mateo remembers, and Fire Marshal Clark, in Glen Side on Keswick Avenue, we had a hot dog truck that would set up 11:00, 11:30, 12 o'clock at night, right outside of Keswick Tavern. And there was nothing legally we could do. And certainly to the business owner who sells food at that time of night, that was not acceptable. So, this is really important, it's not exclusive to flowers, it could happen to any business owner.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
Mr. President.
Actually, Commissioner Myers' comment makes me wonder, would this apply specifically to food, an ordinance like this would in fact apply to food trucks?
Um, this, the way it is written, it is not what it was intended, but as Commissioner Myers points out, it could be, it could be something that would, that could be caught in this, yes.
Could be, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It, it is, it is a use that could be restricted by this ordinance. You know, as I said before, and I apologize for, to the commissioners for being kind of wishy-washy on this, because as I responded earlier to Commissioner Hacker's comment, this is not something that we see in a lot of, a lot of municipalities. So, we were trying to find different ordinance that kind of address this situation, but it's not something that we see in, in a lot of municipalities, not just the ones that we represent, but we looked at other municipalities as well. So, there's a lot of, and more importantly than this, there's really no guidance out there for case law regarding any issue. One of the reasons there's no guidance is any ordinance like this that is restrictive, by and large, these pop-up businesses aren't going to challenge it. It's too expensive. It's just easier to find 1,001 feet and set up there, or, and so, or 5,001 feet and set up there. So, that's why we don't get much guidance from the courts, because nobody really ever challenges something like this.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. What is the permitting status, not for a food, well, I guess it would be a food truck, would an ice cream truck be categorized in the same way?
Um, yeah, it could be.
Because then an ice cream truck would kind of have to slam on the brakes, and that would, you know, I'm not trying to make people hungry, but-
Just wait, you, I get your time. I think what, I think what Commissioner Myers was-
And the question is that, and I know this is making a hard left turn on this, but, you know, Commissioner Spiegelman brings up things like a food truck, you know, food trucks, when we typically think about them, you know, a few years ago, it was the hot dog cart, the hot dog stand, but now the food, food truck that's become an industry that where they're making gourmet food, so I don't know if it's possible to do, not a carve-out, but to maybe look at treating those, those entities a little bit different, because typically, there are a lot of food trucks that actually may, may be in areas 365 days a year. Of course, you see the ice cream truck that is seasonal, but it's there, you know, every day. So, I don't know if there's something that could exempt those, or we want to do something like that?
In light of the food truck concept, the ice cream truck concept was not something that we were looking at when we were, when we were drafting this. Ice cream trucks, by and large, are usually not regulated, they go through usually neighborhoods, they're usually not setting up near an ice cream place, they're usually driving around near the parks or things of that nature. I would, not that I would suggest, obviously, after, we're going to take a look at whether or not, how far this would extend to a food truck, or an ice cream truck, or, or something along, along those lines. But when we were drafting this, the idea was specifically, as it related to the flowers, because that was the, the immediate problem that we were, we were tasked to address.
Can I make a recommendation? I mean, I'd like to get something on the books, obviously to protect our, I mean, I think the 1,000 feet seems like a reasonable starting point, if in fact, you know, let's get it advertised. If in fact, between now and the time we vote, there's some other issues that come up, fine. I'd like to get something on the books, and if we find that 1,000 is too small, we can always adopt and then re-advertise another amendment. But I'd like to get something on the books to protect people for the, the summer months, which tend to be the months where these pop-up businesses come the most. So, it'd be my recommendation, at least, that we go with the initial 1,000 feet, and then talk at the next meeting, and we feel at that point, after Larry can do a grid and show, if 5,000 feet is basically so restrictive, it's unenforceable, you know, then, you know, we can always talk about amending the 1,000 feet to 5,000, but I'd like to move forward with the 1,000, if everybody's amenable of that.
But the motion on the floor right now is to amend the motion to go to 5,000, so that needs to be addressed first.
Already been moved and seconded. Yes, we have to vote on that then. But before we do that, are there any comments from the public? Come up to the microphone, please. Name and address, please.
Edith Schmidt, Elite Florals, 1160 Bradfield Road. I think your, your food trucks are protected for a reason here. One, they have to have a license. Two, they have to be inspected by the Board of Health. Okay? There you go. They are legally licensed and inspected businesses, paying revenue to the township, not somebody who's pulling up in a rider truck, throwing open the door, setting up a tent, stealing the township revenue.
So, so can I ask you a question? So, a food truck showing up on Keswick, if they're licensed, and you don't have a problem with them showing up on Keswick?
Well, I don't want them around another business that's selling the same thing, obviously, but if you're trying to drag this food truck and things into that, I would think that you would have to look at the fact that they are licensed, they are township-bound, and they have to be inspected.
I understand that, I just, I mean, we have to, we're trying to think of all the scenarios, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but we got to think of all the scenarios, and, you know, I think the point that was brought up-
Well, I was just trying to bring the point up, because I know they have to be inspected, and I know they have to have a license in order to sell their-
I understand, but that doesn't change the fact that they could set up right, right outside of a restaurant, or-
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
And it also would not be dispositive as to whether or not they would be, they would be caught up in this, in this ordinance. It's, as I said, it's something that we would have to take a look at.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Laura Lehman Bryant Lane. And I was going to say almost the same thing as Commissioner Markman said, except I was going to change it up a little bit, and say, yeah, go ahead and pass something tonight, but make it closer to what they want, and go and do the grid, and if you find out, I mean, if you find out that there are ample places, and that works, then they've got what they want, and you don't have to even revisit it. So, do it at the 5,000 feet, Commissioner Zepone's recommendation, and then go back. And the other thing, I just wanted to ask, I don't understand how somebody can come and just, in other words, this isn't, let's say you have a gas station, and somebody comes to sell flowers, it's generally another business selling flowers, right? They usually let another business come do business there. It seems like maybe there would be a process where, if you're having another business, that there has to be another licenser process or something that they would jump through, and it's not usually the gas station owner selling that. So, if you could explore that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll wrap.
Well, they're, they're already required to be licensed, right? So, okay. And register their, and register a permit, I mean, I don't think that's the issue here, so.
So, we have a motion on the floor to revise the distance from 1,000 to 5,000 feet, and it was seconded. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let's have a roll call vote, please.
This is for my hands.
Or show of hand, whichever is easier.
Show of hands.
All those in favor of the amended motion to revise the distance from 1,000 to 5,000 feet, show of hands, please. Okay. So, the, so now I'll take a vote on-
The, just so the minutes are clear, the, the motion to amend fails 4 to 10.
Okay. Okay, so that would-
Now you're going to motion, now you're going to read, now we're going to vote on the most, the original motion, without the amended.
So, now, all those in favor of the listed motion on CE3, that was moved and seconded originally, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No.
Okay, the motion passes. Okay, count of those no's. Show of hands, please, for the no.
One.
Two.
Two.
Two. Okay. So, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the code enforcement agenda for this evening.
Okay. Before we move to the next agenda, Commissioner Klein has a-
I just wanted to break, I just wanted to give a brief update on the zoning ordinance. The draft zoning ordinance went in front of the Planning Commission on Tuesday, the 10th, to discuss their final recommendations on draft number two. They will adopt their, they're looking to adopt their recommendations at the 20, the May, March 24th Planning Commission meeting, and then pass it on to the Board of Commissioners, at which time we'll start setting up meetings with the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of Public Safety.
President Luger. PS, PS 1 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2088, repealing Article 6, removal and impounding of illegally parked vehicles of Chapter 156, vehicles and traffic, and establishing and enacting Chapter 160 towing and ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
PS 2 is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2090, amending Chapter 156, vehicles and traffic, Article 2, traffic regulations, Section 7, speed limits established, reducing the speed limits on Rockwell Road from Old Welsh Road to Edgehill Road, from 35 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners, staff, any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
PS 3 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2091, amending Chapter 156, vehicles and traffic, Article 3, parking regulations, Section 25, parking prohibited at all times, no parking between signs, no parking here to corner, parking prohibited except certain hours, no stopping or standing. For adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on April 9th, 2015, an ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passes.
PS 4 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2092, amending Chapter 155, traffic control, Article 1, automated red light enforcements, systems, Section 155-7, duties of the Abington, I'm sorry, duties of the Township of Abington, allowing a $35 cost of collection fee to be added to the $100 red light camera fine, when the fine is referred to a third-party collection agency for adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on April 9th, 2015, an ISO move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner, Vice President Klein.
Thank you. I had a question. So, the $35, we passed the collection agency, I think, a few months ago, the approval of a collection agency a few months ago, is that correct?
I believe we did.
Sometime towards the end of last year. And at that time, did we have a cost that was being paid to them?
No, we did not. That's why we needed, that's why we needed this.
Okay. I guess the question is, how were they being, how was it assumed that they were being paid when we had that collection agency? Did anybody have a thought about?
I imagine it would come out of the $100, as opposed to being added on.
And I think that's correct. I answered a lot of questions about this last week.
I know, I wasn't here, I apologize. I had a family issue.
I hadn't taken a look at that particular part of it, but I believe that it was coming out, so it, it needed, I think really what happened was, the company looked at it, realized that it may have been provided for, but it had not been passed by ordinance, and the company advised us that it needed to be in the ordinance before they could begin collecting it. I think with the, the process we've been going under, that they, in order for them to collect it, they advised us that we needed to pass this.
Are they getting the entire $35?
I believe that is the cost of collection, correct.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners?
I mean, I guess my only comment would be, I mean, we haven't, we have a few months until this comes up for its, I guess, for renewal, if we're going to renew it. It just seems like every couple of months, we're having another something to do with red light cameras, so I'm a little discouraged by that. I mean, I wasn't in favor of them to begin with, but just seems like every time, we're dealing with more fixes and changes, and so, it makes me uncomfortable even further. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? I wanted to make one at the committee meeting, Mr. Raymond Bell gave some very, brought up some very valid issues, and some good points, so we want to thank him for his input at that public safety meeting last week. Thank you. Any comments from-
Excuse me, Mr. President.
Sorry.
I have a question.
Commissioner Farron.
Thank you. Just to kind of dovetail on Commissioner Klein's question, if this does come up again in two months, and we're going to, let's say hypothetically, not re-prove this company, wouldn't it make sense to just wait two months before we make a decision on this? Do we have to do this now for it to-
In order for the collection agency to collect anything that's sent to collection, in order for them to collect their fee, they need to collect this. The current contract that we have expires on September 30th of this year, the one year from when the system was up and operational. So, the Board has to make a decision sometime during the summer, but in order for the collection agency to receive a fee and to go about- agency to receive a fee and to go about collecting the money from these people who are delinquent, I don't think it's a real high amount. We need to pass this ordinance now.
And then hypothetically, if they're not renewed in September, we would have to repeal this and reput forth another ordinance for whatever the new company would be?
If you're-
If it was to continue and-
If you're going to continue with the program.
Right.
But remember, the, this collection agency is not necessarily the company that's running the red light camera-
No, sure.
-program, and that's the, that's the contract that expires on September 30th.
Right, but this would obviously be connected to it.
That's right. That's correct.
Okay.
Although, this may, let's say you stop the red light camera program on September 30th, this agreement may go beyond that because you still may have some collections into October, November, December.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any comments from Commissioners? Jones?
What's the, and it may have been in there if I didn't catch it appropriately, my fault, but what's the order of payment? So, the reason I ask is because at the committee meeting, we discussed what happens if somebody is delinquent, but they're having a difficult time paying the $100. And the response that I believe was given was that they would be able to pay, you know, I'll pay 20, then I'll pay 30, then I'll pay, you know, until I get to the 100. So, I guess it's a two-part question. If I get up to paying $50, is the first $35 going to go to this collection agency? If not, if I get up to paying $100, am I now square with the township, but I'm still basically in a fight with the collection agency and it's just on them to get the $35, but the township is looking at me as if I'm square with them? Or do I have to pay the entire bill to be square with the township?
I'll answer your last question first because I know the answer to that. When it is sent to collection, the amount owed is the total amount, any delinquent amount, any costs, any fees, any cost of collection. That's the total amount. So, you have to satisfy that entire amount. The first question is, who gets paid first? And I will double-check the agreement and get back to all of the Commissioners shortly, but when I looked it over earlier in the month, normally in these agreements, we get our money first, they, for payment plans, and then only when the amount owed to the municipality is satisfied, does the collection agency begin to collect their money.
And Commissioner, the question, the answer to the second question is that the agency said that they did not send them to collection as long as the person has committed a payment and it continues to pay for it, so it doesn't get to the collection agency before that. Once it does get to the collection agency, they're responsible for the entire fee.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from Commissioners? Staff? Any from residents? Name and address, please.
Raymond Bell, 276 Parkview Avenue. Before I talk about the credit reporting, I need to understand something. This agency was doing collection for Abington Township for free before this $35 flat fee?
I don't believe, the program began in October. I don't believe we've been sending delinquent accounts to them up until this came to their attention in the early part of this year, because by the time we were sending out the first notice and the second notice and the third notice, we were already into this, the early part of this year, and it was at that point in time when we were sending it to them that they realized that the ordinance authorizing the $35 collection fee had never been authorized.
So, would we present, would I presume that when they were sent, without this flat fee, they were on a contingency fee?
Without that flat fee, I think what it was is they recognized that we did not pass that, and if we were to continue to send things to collection, they'd take their $35 fee from our money. So, that's why they recommended to us, and I think they originally contacted Officer Posey and Officer Lieutenant Malloy, I think, and told them, you need to adopt this ordinance authorizing our fee.
Maybe it's because they weren't making any money on a contingency fee.
I think it's because we just started to send them to them. The camera went into effect in October, and then the first delinquencies wouldn't have gotten to them till this year.
Okay, thank you. Let me just address one thing, and it was probably brought up by Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Jones in the last meeting about credit reporting. And that I have a concern about because I don't know why the collection agency needs to report account-level information to the major credit reporting agencies. When an agency gets an account, it can make an inquiry to a credit reporting agency that shows it as an inquiry only, not the account data. If they start reporting account data, then they have to make sure that that account data is kept current. So, if somebody's paying hypothetically $10 a month repayment, then they have to keep changing the balance in the credit reporting agency when that balance changes because they have an obligation to make sure that that, they're furnishing the information to the credit reporting agency. My suggestion is to not have the credit, the agency do credit reporting on the township fines. They can make an inquiry, but I don't think that they should be making account-level information because think of this. To Mr. Jones's point about, you have a person that has, Commissioner Jones, sorry, where you have, somebody's making $10 payments to the agency and they take 10 months to pay. Meanwhile, with account-level information, they're going to go out and buy a home and they're going to get turned down because of the negative report in the credit agency. That doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. And to say, or think, and I want you to remember this, American Express, HSBC, and Capital One recently settled lawsuits where they were giving the agencies, they had contracts with indemnification to the agencies. So, if the agency did whatever they did, the indemnification wouldn't come back to them. The courts found, and there's one class action lawsuit now pending in New York, where the courts say, well, if you hire the agency, you're responsible for what they do. Now, I don't think the township is as big as American Express or HSBC or what, but don't get comfortable when you say, well, whatever they do, we're going to hold harmless, because if somebody's going to sue you, which someone did to this agency, they can include the township. And if they include the township, even if you have the indemnification, you're going to have to go defend that action. They're just not going to say, you're going to pick the phone up and say, well, take our name off it because we have the indemnification. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
Don't we have any other, besides the red light cameras, where there's fines that are issued and then they have to go to collections? I mean, this isn't the first time this has happened, is it?
No, no, Commissioner, we're not, and this is the normal practice. The idea is that by having the additional charge there and the collection agency involved that provides a person an incentive to pay for it. Otherwise, there is no real incentive. You have to remember that normally in these deals, we were able to deal with it much more effectively because they're a law violation, so they're fines, and so people can actually be put in jail for not paying their fines. This is, this is not a fine, this is not a criminal matter, this is a civil matter. So, therefore, it's the thing that makes people pay their bills, just like with the taxes. If you don't pay your taxes at a certain point, there's a penalty that gets paid and it gets turned over to someone that collects the taxes because it's the only way that people have any motivation to do that. And I just encourage you to remember that while we're talking about this, we're talking about $100 is the fine in this. We're not talking about an astronomical amount like the, like sometimes people's taxes or things like that. So, the idea here is to provide a motivation for people to pay it, get it off the books and so that that can move on and-
So, we do have other collections?
The chief is entirely correct. Every other type of fine or what we have in the township, we have other mechanisms to get our money, whether they're liens or whether it's other ways, if it's something under the Crimes Code, we have other ways to get our money. Because of the unique nature of this program and the startup nature of this program, this is the only way to get our money from somebody who just refuses to pay.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, if that be the case, the motion was moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I oppose. Show of hands of opposition.
Show of opposed.
Okay. Thank you.
PS5 is a motion to authorize township officials to accept a grant capped in the amount of $15,000 for the DARE program and ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
PS6 is a motion to appoint candidate Nathan Walters from the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the Position of Probationary Police Officer, Provided he Successfully Completes the Background, Physical and Psychological Tests and All Entry Requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120 Training. Appointment will be effective May 4th, 2015 and ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
PS7 is a motion to appoint candidate Christians Shaw for the Certified Civil Service Eligibility List to the Position of Probationary Police Officer, Provided he Successfully Completes the Background, Physical and Psychological Tests and All Entry Requirements of the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission for Act 120 Training. Appointment will be effective May 4th, 2015 and ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Huckle.
Yes, I'm just proud to report that Chris and his family are residents of Overlook Hills in Ward 10. They're a wonderful family. I've gotten to know them over the last year, and I'm really delighted to see that he'll have this opportunity.
I concur with that. This is a winner for the township and especially the chief. Thank you. Any comments other than from Commissioners, staff, and residents?
Laura Layman, I don't have a comment on that. I'm just going to ask you again, Commissioner Luger, please to slow down in between comments from residents, all in favor, aye. Okay, you could slow that down, put a pause in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Before we start, I just want to give a brief word of thanks to Commissioner Farron for filling in when I was out during Public Affairs Committee on a family business. Thank you very much. Did an admirable job. We have seven-
Even though I wasn't here, I want to thank Commissioner Farron for filling in.
I was missed, that's the difference. We have seven items on our Public Affairs agenda tonight. The first is PA1, Resolution Number 15-013 Designating the Township of Abington as a National Audubon Bird Town. This is a motion to approve Resolution Number 15-013 Designating the Township of Abington as a National Audubon Bird Town.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Commissioner-
Does this, does this mean Mr. Altadonna is now going to be staying in Abington?
It means he's a commissioner of the birds.
You've got to look at birds.
You know, I would like to note that on the Upper Dublin meeting minutes, they had, he was there for a meeting to make them a bird town as well, so we're going to be adjacent to bird towns.
I'll start carrying an umbrella.
And if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Farron requested that I get some form of communication given the two students' credit for an excellent presentation that night. So, if I can get those names forwarded to me, I will take care of that.
Yeah, I've got those names too. Lexi and Rachel did a great job presenting that.
If you could email me that with their spelling so I get to correct that. Dr. Altadonna, would that go to Dr. Sickel or who in the school district?
I believe it would go to the principal, Mr. Varios.
Varios, okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, all those, any other comments? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Next, we have PA2, Business Integrity Policy. It's a motion to adopt the Business Integrity Policy, which establishes guidelines to ensure all businesses, all business conducted by the Township of Abington, by the Township, observes the highest standards of honesty and integrity and ISO move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comments from Commissioners or staff? Any from residents?
Laura Layman, so, as you know, I believe that we need a bigger place for a discussion. One Commissioner said recently that we needed a place for honorable debate, and it's only agitators that activists engage in honorable debate. There's no place in this township for the debates except on what you decide you want to debate. And when the residents have issues and they want to debate them on issues of integrity, which this speaks to, there is no place to do that. And I am asking you, when I think Commissioner Schreiber and I had a discussion about this at the podium last time, that if she decides there's no problem, she limits me to three minutes, she decides there's no problem and doesn't want to make a place outside of the meeting to discuss it, that's the end of it. So, if we feel that there is a lack of integrity, there's no place to go to report that so that legislation, and as you said, you know, if there's criminal wrongdoing or whatever, you report that to the authorities, okay? But if there is criminal wrongdoing because of how things are managed here, that's a matter of legislation. That's a matter that you take to your legislators, who are all sitting in front of me tonight, minus one at least, and you ask them to amend that so that that no longer is a problem. And the attitudes that we've had from that side of the podium have been a problem with integrity in this township. And I'm asking that to change, and I'm asking you specifically, President Luger, to respond, please, as we've talked about responding to residents after the meeting, so that we can find out where that place is.
Thank you.
Okay? So, I'll ask for an answer to that after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Next, we have PA3, TD Bank Grant for Green Streets. This is a motion to approve the acceptance of the TD Green Streets Grant in the amount of $20,000. No match is required, but this is a reimbursement grant. Grant expenses will be paid for out of an account that will be set up at a later date by the Finance Department and then reimbursed at the end of the project after a final report has been submitted and approved and ISO move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Name and address for the record, please.
Laura Layman, Bryant Lane, and just wanted to say, we're on our third nonprofit tonight, Star Communities, that money's coming from the township to set up the startup of that business. We have a bird town, which is another nonprofit that is intricately involved with our community because bird people don't have to come to you to ask if they can set up. They only have to come to you to ask if they can set up if they really want to ask you to make sure that money, my money, your money gets funneled back. And so, that's where the problem is. Now, we have another green one. This is why all this environmental stuff is coming up, because of the green money that is in the government. And we talked about the whams the other day and how the new slant on whams is. I just wanted to bring some sheets. Commissioner Myers, I have the articles of the recent things. You said there was nothing recent, but there are recent instances of whams actually sort of being built into the budget, okay? In this case, it was a transportation budget, for instance, recently. And on top of that, we have the nonprofit issue, which is a matter of, it used to be that there were nonprofits set up to actually have political money for elections, and people kind of got wise to that. That was back in the 90s, okay? They got wise to that and they said, okay, you know, you're funneling tons of money to your election committee. Now, what we have is, it's not an election committee, it's all these other nonprofits that are collecting money and then doing the bidding of the people that they're asking the money of. the money of. So that is the, when you get more than three minutes, you can explain it, or when somebody wants to have an honest dialogue back and forth, you can explain it. So thank you for letting me explain.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments from residents?
Hold on to it for me, thank you.
Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all of us, oh, did you have a question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, next is PA 4, Deer Hunt in Carebrook. This is a motion to approve controlled hunts in the Carebrook Nature Study area by Abington Deer Management for the entire season from September 19th, 2015, to January 23rd, 2016. Signs will be posted along the perimeter of the area, noting that the area will be closed inclusively for the dates noted above, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Commissioner Klein.
Yeah, I wasn't, unfortunately, I wasn't here for the Public Affairs Meeting, and I think to some extent I expressed this to Mr. Wendell before. You know, they didn't pull any deer out last year. I looked at the numbers, they're marginally different, if not a little bit lower. So I'm looking, I'm fine approving it this year, but starting to think that this may not be the best method, so I think I'm going to look at it a little more cautiously going forward. But one thing I did want to make sure, which gets on the record, we're going to follow the same exact protocol that we've been following with ADM, as far as notification to the police department and all those things, and then also get a report halfway through the deer season. Correct. Thank you.
Commissioner DePone.
Yeah, just a question I have. Are there any other groups like this that do this hunting?
Commissioner, I don't know all of them, but there are a few. There's some that are up in Grand Haven, and there's an organization that the St. Basil Nuns were allowing to hunt on their property. Abington Deer Management is somewhat different. They have liability insurance, and they have been the preferred organization to do the hunts since 1997, I believe was the first one to help.
Did we ever speak to any other groups, to ask if they had insurance and all that? Do we like, go through an interview process with them to see, you know, if somebody else wants to do this, give them a chance?
I believe Sue Forster, when she was director, along with the president of Abington Deer Management, and I believe, I think it's Whitetail Associates, were discussed, it was discussed with them, and I assume that the reason they chose Abington Deer Management, because at the time, most of the members of Abington Deer Management were Abington residents, and so they were allowing them to do it. They also had an excellent safety record, and they were insured.
Okay, but that was when Sue was here. Have we recently checked with any of these other groups? And can we do that?
No, I have a question, because we've had so much, we've had no safety issues with Abington Deer Management in the 20 years almost that we've been using them, so I-
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, can we check with one of these other groups? A couple of these other groups, to see maybe they're re-interested, get all their credentials and stuff?
Sure.
Give, you know, somebody else a chance?
I can ask, sure.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other comments from commissioners? Commissioner Spiegel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also, this is something that I know Commissioner Klein and I have chatted about in the past. I also like to reiterate those concerns about the overall efficacy of this program, just sort of based on the numbers. It's something I'd like us to look at in the future. Thank you, that's all.
Is there an alternate, I mean, actually, I got hit by a deer this year, $8,000 worth of damage.
Did you seriously?
Yeah, and then Frank-
In the township?
In the township, in Commissioner Klein's ward, and I personally blame him, but-
I sent him after you. That'll teach you to come into my ward.
And actually, I was driving up Susquehanna this morning, and two deer passed within two feet of my car, but I guess the question is, is there any other ways of controlling it? I don't want to get in a big discussion about it, but what are the other methods?
Could ask them to leave nicely.
Commissioner Schreiber can tell you what I was going to say.
I could.
There are many, there are many other ways that you can try to control deer herds. Most of them have been found not effective. There's birth control, which you have to inoculate the same deer multiple times, and in an area where they are free to roam, that's next to impossible. Trap and transfer has not been proven effective, because first of all, you catch the deer, then the deer is caged while they're transporting it to some other location. A deer grows up in a particular area, learns to eat in its body, learns how to digest the foods that are available in that area. You take it out in the middle of the state or somewhere else, and now they're faced with trying to survive in an entirely different environment than they're used to, and it doesn't work very well. Hunting has been the chosen method for a long time, because the other thing is that Abington Deer Management does not charge for their efforts. You know, there were things like mirrors along the roadlines, and I've read very up-and-down information about them being effective, and I checked into it, and the, just to get more information on how they're put out, and it was very involved, and it didn't seem like it worked anyway. So, I mean, the game commission, although it's, the game commission has probably its own agenda to push with hunters, they're the ones that probably do the most studying of this issue. So they usually recommend hunting, and we've been doing it for 20 years, and we don't see large changes, especially down in Carebrook, but Carebrook, we've hunted down there for a number of years in a row. And if you stop hunting, you can guarantee that what will happen is that the deer will continue to produce. They're frequently, there are twins, which is very unusual in the wild. They usually produce one offspring all year. Around here, you see them twins frequently, sometimes triplets. So you can just, for every doe, you can figure there's at least one more doe that's going to show up next year. And without hunting, that's going to happen. And Abington Deer Management is not the only one that hunts in Abington. There are the other organizations that have permission to hunt on private property. So the hunt in Alphathorpe is a single day, which is next item, but the Carebrook one is for the full season. And the deer are wild animals, they go where they want. They're not Alphathorpe deer, they're not Carebrook deer, they're not, you know, they're deer, they just go everywhere in the township. And Philadelphia spends $200 for deer, and they pay the Department of Agriculture to come in at night, over bait piles with sharpshooters, shoot the deer, and they take out hundreds of deer a year. And they do that at a fair expense. So that's where, when you're using a group like Abington Deer Management, you're not paying for it, but then again, you have to go by the game laws, which restrict hours and methods, so.
Commissioner Markman, we can, we can put shrub branches in Commissioner Spiegelman's back of his pants, and they could all go to Ward 11.
The deer in Ward 11 are trained. They obey. We also have a wolf. We brought in one wolf.
I'm not necessarily against deer hunting. I actually have Abington Deer Management hunting my property, because they're running up the kind, and so I don't have a problem with it, I just don't know that there's, I'm not, starting to get skeptical that there's an actual reward or return on investment, so to speak. I know there's no money involved here, but-
It would probably be good to have Ron Griffith come to a committee meeting. I thought he was going to be here last week, but I guess he was unable to be here. But, you know, I've spoken with him at length, and he's pretty much said the same thing I have. So it's, but you can certainly hear it from his mouth, because he sees it firsthand. He's picked up those deer that you see in his statistics.
Minus the, minus the incident where the deer hit Commissioner Markman's car, as opposed to the Commissioner Markman's car hitting the deer.
And you know, it's funny, two years ago, I got hit as well in Commissioner Klein's ward, so that's, in four years, I've got hit twice by deer and-
Still haven't gotten a message?
Those were his pets.
I guess I should get a red car instead of a dark-colored car, so.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Which brings us to PA 5, Controlled Deer Hunt in Alphathorpe Park. This is a motion to approve a one-day controlled hunt to take place in Alphathorpe Park during the 2015-2016 season, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents?
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry, commissioners-
The same comment as PA 4, which was 11 minutes, right? Okay.
Okay, any comments from residents? Sir, name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Brian Keister, 1761 Rockwell Road. And actually, I just have a question for the deer hunts and such. Where's the, where's the meat going to? Because that might be a great opportunity to help feed, you know, our homeless residents in the township, and, I mean, maybe help feed meat too. I like deer meat, so, but on a more serious note, though, I'm just kind of curious of where that deer meat's going.
Abington Deer Meat, Abington Deer Management donates all the meat.
And what they don't donate, many of the hunters do actually use themselves.
Right. They're not selling it.
You might want to contact Mr. Doug Wendell, and he can pass that information on to you.
Someone put you on a list for deer meat.
Okay. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
One opposed.
Okay, one opposed, yes.
Now, we have PA 6, Resolution Number 15-012, Authorizing Disposition of Certain Parks and Recreation Office Records. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 15-012, authorizing the disposition of certain parks and recreation office records, as set forth in Exhibit A, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And finally, we have PA 7, This is a Bid Award for Sand Blasting of the Pembren and Cressmont Pools. This is a motion to accept the lowest responsible bid of New Age Corporation in the amount of $88,800 for the sand blasting and painting of both the Pembren and Cressmont Pools. Funding for this project will come from 2014 capital account number 07-24-800-7535. Total budget for this project is $95,000, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And, Mr. President, item PA 8 has been deleted, and that concludes our Public Affairs Agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Spiegelman. Vice President Klein, Director of Finance Committee, is next.
Thank you, President Luger. Treasurer Jay Blumenthal is not with us tonight. His monthly report on taxes collected and deposits is available for residents' review at the Township Manager's Office upon request. We'll start with FC 1, Motion to A, Approve the January Expenditures as Previously Circulated to the Board in the Amount of $1,949,491.96, and salaries and wages in the Amount of $2, And B, Authorize the Proper Officials to Sign Vouchers in Payment of Bills and Contracts As They Mature Through the Month of April 2015, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sefan?
Yes.
Spiegelman?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Markman?
Yes.
Deloski?
Yes.
Farron?
Yes.
Lefever?
Yes.
Hecker?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Luger?
Yes.
FC 2, Motion to Approve the Advance and Travel Expense Activity for January 2015 as Previously Circulated to the Board. Advance and travel expense reports were $0.03 and $3,989.54, respectively. One-month expenses totaled $3,989.54, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC 3, Motion to Approve the Clearing Fund, the Deferred Revenue Expense Activity, and Petty Cash Balances for the Month of January as Previously Circulated to the Board. January Petty Cash Balances, Previously Circulated to the Board, Clearing Fund Receipts and Disbursements for the Month of January 2015 were $620.06 and $2,872.70, respectively. Deferred Revenue Expense Receipts and Disbursements for the Month of January 2015 were $0.03 and $13,084.57, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC 4, Motion to Authorize an Additional Expenditure from 2014 Miscellaneous Expense in the Permanent Improvement Fund, Account Number 07-00-000-5999, in the Amount of $3,050, to be distributed equally among the five volunteer fire companies serving Abington Township, which amounts to $610 to each company, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC 5, Motion to Authorize an Additional Expenditure from Unallocated Permanent Improvement Fund Balance, Account Number 07-00-000-5999, in the Amount of $1,980, the 2014 allotment, to be distributed equally, $396 each, among the five volunteer fire companies serving Abington Township, and I so move.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners or staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
President Luger, that concludes the Finance Committee's Agenda.
Thank you, Vice President Klein. At this time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Hecker, Director of the Pension Committee.
Thank you, President Luger. The Pension Committee has two items of business this evening. The first is PENS 1, and this is Resolution Number 15-014, the Restatement of Abington Township's Police Pension Plan Investment Policy. And this is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 15-014, Updating the Abington Township Police Pension Plan Investment Policy, as prepared by Aon Investment Consulting, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff or residents? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And second, we have PENS 2, which is Resolution Number 15-015, Restatement of Abington Township's Non-Uniformed Employees Pension Plan Investment Policy. And this motion is to adopt Resolution Number 15-015, Updating the Abington Township Non-Uniformed Employees Pension Plan Investment Policy, as prepared by Aon Investment Consulting, and I so move.
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you, President Luger. That concludes our business.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker. That concludes our formal agenda. So at this time, I'll entertain any comments from residents. Name and address, please.
Raymond Bell, 2076 Parkview Avenue. I'd like to recognize the accomplishment of Abington High School's basketball team this year, and especially to Coach Charles Grassley, who I had the pleasure of coaching, and Pop Warner, as I did, another young man. But I wanted to thank them for a fine season.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any other comments from residents?
Laura Layman, Bryant Lane, and I wanted just to continue that discussion about getting answers from the township, and in particular, I have five questions in to Mr. Lefever about the crime issue. As you know, you've heard me mention the crime issue in my neighborhood in particular, where we were trying to get some answers. A detective told me he didn't know when he was investigating the burglaries, and I gave you the whole rundown. Commissioner Klein heard it too, because he was there the first time that I said it. The second time, he may not have been at that meeting, but certainly, I'm sure, Mr. Lefever or somebody would have notified him, should he need to be notified of something important in his neighborhood, and I have a feeling he probably watches the meetings anyhow later on. But the issue here is that, in all that time that I've been trying to get answers, I've been denied some very basic answers, such as whether or not that detective did or didn't know about that, whether he told me the truth, or whether he didn't tell me the truth, and what the policy of the township is. Those are important issues, and I understand that, you know, to a certain degree, you are, we're limited to requesting documents for answers. That will not keep this township safe. In that particular instance, by the way, I had been notified one time that there was an incident near my house by the police. In fact, when I did the math myself, I found five times, and the website was just updated, there were six times that within just several houses of me, there was an incident that I was unaware of. And the number of incidents was double what I was given by Mr. Lefever when you saw that he had the paper he was going to give me after the meeting. That's a huge concern. It's not a concern when we have an open dialogue, but we don't have an open dialogue. I then ask for answers to those questions, and boom, the door shut, okay? I would like that door to get open. That's the only way the residents in this township will be safe and will be working I appreciate you, for a start, just asking Mr. LaFever, please to give me those answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lehman. Any other comments from residents?
Vice President Klein. It actually brings up a good point. I have heard from a few residents in the neighborhood. I haven't actually heard from the Speaker that just spoke, but I have heard from other residents. And with the help of the Police Department, Deputy Chief Livinggood and Chief Kelly have set up a meeting on Thursday, March 19th, at seven o'clock in the Board meeting, excuse me, in the Boardroom to discuss some of those issues. I've also arranged with Manager LaFever to try to get that televised, because I have heard from some residents that will not be able to be there. And I also invited Commissioner Markman, because I know he's had some similar issues. Thank you.
No, Mrs. Lehman, no, you've had your opportunity to speak.
Those residents gave him the information that I gave, and he has heard at this podium.
Mrs. Lehman, thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, we'll start with comments from Commissioners. We'll start with Commissioner De Placido.
Thank you, President Luker. Just want to give a quick thank you to Director Michelau and Angelo, and thanks to Public Works for doing it once again last week with that 14-hour snowfall. Thanks, great job through the township. I made a comment on my Facebook page, it was like night and day, traveling through the different towns, especially Philadelphia, so thanks. Please extend my thanks to all your staff. A couple of things going on in Ward Four, and Commissioner Spiegelman, this is for you. The McKinley Firehouse Pancake Breakfast is on Sunday, March 15th, at the McKinley Firehouse. The hours of the event are 8:00 to 12:00 p.m. Prices are adults $7 and kids $5.
I need pancakes from food trucks.
Thank you. And one other thing, shameless plug, McKinley Elementary will be holding a blood drive next week as well, on Thursday, March 19th. The hours of the blood drive are 12:30 to 5:30. I can't promise any pancakes there, but there will be cookies and juice and what are in, and you're saving a life too, so you don't need the pancakes. Lastly, there was a comment made tonight by the Speaker, and she had mentioned that the STAR program was being funded by the township, and I do not believe that to be true at all. In fact, the two representatives from the EAC that are going to travel to Washington are using money that was collected by the sale of rain barrels. So no funding is coming from the township for that program. And with that said, when driving through Abington, please drive like your kids live here. Thank you, President.
No, Mrs. Lehman, you're out of order. No, 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 you have to sit down. You've had your opportunity to speak. Thank you. In all due respect, Mrs. Lehman, you had your opportunity. Thank you. Commissioner Farron.
Is your interest in the truth, or is your interest just in?
No, Mrs. Lehman, please sit down. Thank you. Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo some of Commissioner De Placido's thoughts, too, to Ed and the entire state of Public Works, another amazing job. Want to congratulate all the players in the Abington basketball team. Thank you for bringing that up. It's a great honor for them to go as far as they did, and a testament to the effort of the students and to the coaches, so congratulations to them. Congratulations to the Fire Department and all the new recruits who were sworn in and recognized tonight. I was going to make a joke about Commissioner Spiegelman, but I actually want to thank you. I'm going to, we're going to go a little serious, just thank you for, before last week's meeting, the time to go over some of the information, we appreciate that very much. And to, for everybody who's wondering, it was a relatively brief conversation, so it was good.
Wow.
I'm sorry.
If this was one hand, smack it with the other, all right?
I couldn't, I'm sorry. I would also just like to point out that we are going to be having a blood drive at the Copper Beach Elementary School as well on Wednesday, the 18th, from 1:00 to 6:00 o'clock at night. It is the pint-sized hero role in the American Red Cross, so every student who brings somebody is recognized as a pint-sized hero. And again, to echo Commissioner De Placido, you helped save a life, so if you can make it out to Copper Beach, Wednesday, the 18th, from 1:00 to 6:00, please come out and donate. It'd be very much appreciated. Just plug a couple of events very quickly. G Y A C is having Designer Bag Bingo as a fundraiser for the Glenside Youth Athletic Club, which is this Friday night at 6:30. There's more information available on the web, or you can, on their website, or you can reach out to me. The Abington Soccer Team's 5K is taking place on the 28th. I'm trying to see if I can make that. I don't know if the schedule will permit it, but hopefully, I'll be out there and running along with people in the first 5K of the season, at least for me. And then, also want to make note that the Glenside Gardens Civic Association is having a social at the K T, the Cheswick Tavern, on the 30th of March, which is a Monday night. Come on out and get to know some of your neighbors. We'd love to talk to you and find out what's going on. And finally, I'm sorry Larry Mateo left, as members of the Board, and I'm sure everybody in the township has received his email forwarding the link to the newspaper article in which he is featured and mentioned prominently in the picture. So it's, I think it's great news in all seriousness, I just wish Larry was here to enjoy some of the gentle ribbing, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillespie.
Thank you. I just want to mention, you missed this in your list, to keep the parade running, 5K One Mile Walk is April 11th, and that starts at the VFW in Glenside on Jenkentown Road. And I hope everybody, I'm sure you'll be there, right?
Yes.
Thank you. And I also want to congratulate all the new firemen, and I just think it's wonderful, I am, we have the fantastic fire departments, and we should be so proud. And I hope everybody out there throughout the township realizes they are all volunteers. It's so important, and they do a great job. And to Chipper Jones, I've known him forever, and congratulate him again on his 40-plus years, he's a great guy. And also, I just want to mention, and I know Commissioner Kalinowski will finish up on this, we have a Coffee With a Cop, March 28th, so you can give all the details, okay? And again, that's at the VFW in Glenside. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hecker.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd also like to echo the comments about the high school basketball teams. My family and I were at the boys' game last Saturday. It was a heartbreaking loss, but they fought back to within one, and it was a close game, and they played really hard. The girls' team is actually playing tomorrow night at 7:30 against the defending state champs. They got a tough game, but I think they're going to pull it out. Secondly, I want to thank my colleagues here on the Board for your support in helping us to address the issues on Rockwell Road. And I want to especially thank Chief Kelly and the members of the Police Department for working with us, thinking flexibly, and willing to think outside of the box, to take steps to make the residents over there feel safer. I have my deep appreciation for that. And finally, we have an important event coming up on April 18th in our neighborhood, Overlook Hills. At 9:00 a.m., there's an event being organized by resident and neighbor Tina Carlson, and she's going to be joined by members of the Environmental Advisory Committee, local scouting groups, some of the children from Overlook Elementary and others. We're going to work to clean the stream and the stream beds in Roychester Park. We are in need of additional help, and so anyone who would be interested to lend a hand for an hour or two, I ask you to get in contact with me. You will need long pants, long shirts, and gloves, because we've got some work to do, but it's a great way to start off the spring and get the stream beds clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones. First of all, I want to, before, I'm glad Commissioner Hecker did not mention before Commissioner Klein does, there's potential for a nasty rumor to go about something about sandwiches and cheese steaks, and I'm glad they won't mention it, because it is false, and it is, it's just vicious. I'd like to say that I will have Java with Jones on Saturday. It will take place at the Corner Cafe in the Huntington Valley Shopping Center. It will take place from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m., and hope any residents can come out if we catch it on the TV. Would also like to thank Ed Michelau and the Streets Department, fantastic job. Commissioner De Placido, again, the Pancake Breakfast at the McKinley Fire Company, that's in Ward Three. So I just wanted to make sure that we're all aware of that, but we share those things. Thank you very much. But that is in Ward Three. Also in Ward Three is the Abington Arts Center, with all seriousness, I know Commissioner Klein does activities there. The Abington Arts Center is a phenomenal gem. It is a place that really we have to use more, and it is such a, the things that you can do there and the things that can open people's worlds up to is phenomenal. Last night, I was able to make a coffee mug. I would not suggest that anyone drink out of it, but we're getting better. And hopefully, we'll be able to do some things in bringing potentially artwork and other things here so that people can see it. And then finally, I'd like to thank a whole list of people very quickly, and this is just on one project, and I think it shows how Abington can work together as a community. So we heard that there was a subdivision that was approved tonight, and the individuals who have worked on that included, and these are people who came out and gave up their time on weekends, in meetings, emails, and included the Historical Society, members of the Planning Commission, Township staff, neighbors, I mean, neighbors are just tremendous, Larry Mateo and his department, and then various Commissioners who talked about ideas like the sidewalks, Commissioner De Placido, everyone coming together. And specifically, I'd like to thank Ms. Fury, who is a neighbor who took her time to meet with Mr. Mateo, who met with others, who identified a potential issue, brought it to everyone's attention, and made sure that action was taken, and it helped to protect her future neighbors, her current neighbors, and the township. And I think that it shows that when we all work together, it can, it can work. So thank you, Ms. Fury, and thank you, everyone else. Thank you. Vice President Klein.
I only have one comment. I just wanted to make sure, make, get an announcement Saturday in here, Saturday in the Boardroom, I think it's at 10:00 a.m. They'll have a, Commissioners from Montgomery County will be here for Commissioner Talk, for people to show up. Other than that, I have no other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, a poem.
Yeah, just as a reminder to my residents, the Third Annual Ardsley Family Day Pancake Breakfast will be held Sunday, March 29th, from 8:00 to noon at the North Penn VFW. This year, we're partnering with the VFWs and with Steve for an Easter egg hunt and a visit from the Easter Bunny. So thanks, Steve. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. A lot of people took some of mine already, but I do want to add my voice to those cheering our senior high men's and women's basketball teams. As Commissioner Hecker said, the women are now in the third round of the playoffs tomorrow, and they do, they do face state champ and Division III champ, Cumberland Valley. So go ghosts. Speaking of blood drives, there's also a blood drive at Abington Presbyterian Church this Sunday, the 15th, March 15th, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You can just go on redcrossblood.org to sign up, you can search by zip code. Couple of, couple of words of thanks. Animal Control Officer Ron Griffith is such an unbelievable resource in this township. I lack the words to fully describe, and I just want to voice my appreciation of him. We had some, we had some raccoons, we had some rabies, and Ron and other, other members of the force just went above and beyond to, to do everything they could to corral, corral these wily critters and get them tested, and I really cannot, cannot express my appreciation enough. And speaking of not being able to express appreciation enough, Public Works, I will, I will say, as, as my colleagues have said, another phenomenal job this winter, under taxing circumstances that came at awful times. I know we have, we have a lot of folks in Ward 11 who work, who work for Public Works. They work for Public Works during the day, and then they volunteer at the Abington Fire Company at night, which is pretty cool. And so the work they did was amazing. And I also specifically want to thank Ed Michelau and Angelo Pontalandalfo for helping me and a Ward 11 resident out. Commissioner Klein's given me the hook, but I'm going to just say one more thing. Congratulations, congratulations again to Deputy, retired Deputy Chief Chipper Jones. And I'll say, as many others have said, our Fire Department is, is truly exceptional. The work that they do, completely volunteer, the hours that they put in, and as everyone knows from watching the news recently, they have been working overtime. All the fire companies, and of course, I want to give a special shout out to the Abington Fire Company right here in Ward 11. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. No comments this evening.
Commissioner Myers, thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to add my congratulations to Chipper Jones. I have also known him a long time, not as long as Commissioner Gillespie, but I did not know until tonight that his name was Charles.
Thank you. Commissioner Markman.
No comment, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Kalinowski.
Yeah, I'd like to also congratulate the firefighters and the graduates. And to see that many firefighters fill this room, it's just in all, and that's just the, and they're volunteers, and they come so proud, and they, they really represent Abington, which is great. I'd like to congratulate Lou's Dockside, they are a company that gives back to the community. They've always been involved, and they do give back, their, their family, their children, everyone's a part of this community. The boys' basketball team, it was fun to go watch some games. If you ever get a chance to go watch, it's great to be a part of Abington and just see what these kids in school do. March 28th is Coffee With a Cop at the VFW. I'll make the coffee. Come out, we'll have some Danish, we'll talk to the cops and have some fun. March 29th is our Easter breakfast. I think we start at eight or nine in the morning, eight in the morning, and we have an Easter egg hunt at 11:00, so if any of the kiddies are out there and they want to come to an Easter egg hunt, feel free to come. April 10th, CAP, which is a big organization, which I support a lot, we're having a Designer Bag Bingo at the VFW.
17th, April 17th.
You are the 17th, right?
That's the 17th, right?
You're the 17th, I'm the 10th. We're two different, Ardsley Day is having one too. So, thank you. April 11th, keep the parade running at the VFW. The VFW has a team of 10 right now, and we're reaching for more, so if you want to join our team, come on over. And you join early, you get a discount on your registration, and you have to get a T-shirt out of that, too. Real quick, the 24-hour relay is starting. We're always looking for volunteers. There's a child check that you have to go through now, so please contact us early if you'd like to volunteer for the 24-hour relay. Ron Griffith is our co-chair with Gene Corrigan this year. They're both good people of Abington, and been a longtime people of Abington. Real quick, I know it's springtime. Every year, the North Penn VFW puts out flags on veterans' graves at Hillside and Holy Sepulcher. We estimate this year we'll do 5,000 flags. So you think it's a big process, and we're always looking volunteers, families, kids, anybody wants to come out in May, the whole month of May, we'll be doing that, but on the weekends, come out if you want to walk a cemetery. The history you learn by doing this is just amazing. The people you see now there that served our country is amazing. And we have to have this done by Memorial Day, because that's our goal, to reach Memorial Day, but 5,000 flags is a lot, a lot of veterans, so please feel free to join us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schreiber.
Thank you. I have two items this evening. So first of all, I want to talk about the Montgomery County Overdose Task Force that I was lucky enough to co-chair with Chief Bill Kelly. We just submitted our preliminary report to the county Commissioners on Monday. We had a great team, it was a multidisciplinary team that worked on this, including some Abington residents. And the, the preliminary report is very readable, there has been some press about it this week, but it is available on the Montgomery County website. And it's an important issue, I just wanted to make everybody aware of it, and again, to thank my co-chair, or I guess, not my co-chair, we are co-chairs, for that endeavor, it was a really good one, so thank you.
My pleasure.
The second thing was, that I want to mention, is that the Roslyn Film Festival is coming up on Saturday, March 28th. Doors open at 6:30. It is a $5 admissions, and all proceeds go to the Roslyn Firehouse. You saw all the firefighters here tonight. Again, as you've been reminded many times, they, all of the firehouses are volunteers, they need the extra income where they can get it, and this is a good, fun event. I'm not even sure how many, I think it's five films, six films that we're showing this year. The short films, the audience votes, it's a fun night, there's a concession stand.
Red carpet, is there a red carpet?
There is a red carpet, and our own Commissioner Spiegelman is the host of the red carpet. So, and that gets filmed, and then it goes on the website, so you can see last year's John Spiegelman on the red carpet interviewing people. And some of the films are available on the Roslyn Film Festival website, so if you've never been to one, you can look at the website first, and then just see what a fun time it is, and I'm sure you'll want to be there. So again, the doors open 6:30 Saturday, March 28th, and the show starts at 7:00. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. And lastly, Mr. Bell, you mentioned Mr. Charles Grassley, the coach of the Abington basketball team. I just want to send out special thanks to Mr. Charles Grassley, who you trained, coached in football, and I think there's a lot of young men who have gone through bigger and better things in Abington, were under your leadership as little boys in the Abington Raiders Football League. And speaking of the Grassleys, Carter Grassley, who works in the Waypoint Treatment Plan, was, did an excellent job plowing under Ed Michelau's excellent, and Angelo's excellent removal of snow this winter, so I just wanted to give a shout out to the Grassley family, both Charles and Carter, for excellent work done. And lastly, many of you might not know him, but Mr. Mark Canny, who was a longstanding member of our Planning Commission, recently passed away. Lived down in the McKinley section, I believe it's Ward Three, and his services will be this coming Monday at Salem Baptist Church in Jenkentown. So if there are any other comments or no other business, I'll entertain the meeting[1771.76]